Everyone, to the City of Pacifica City Council Meeting, December 14th, 2020. Can we have a call to order? I will call this meeting to order. And can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yeah.
Councilmember Beer.
Here.
Councilmember Vatolos.
Here.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here.
Mayor Martin, would you like me to let the audience know about the meeting participation details?
Yes, please. Thank you.
This meeting is being held by video conference with no physical location open to the public. The public can observe and participate in the meeting via the Zoom link provided in the agenda, or by phone to the dial-in number and webinar ID provided in the agenda. The meeting may also be observed live on local TV channel 26 or online at www.cityofpacifica.org/live. For this meeting, live verbal public comments may be made through participation by Zoom. The members of the public participating via Zoom use the raise hand feature to indicate that you wish to speak on an agenda item or during oral communications when their mayor calls upon that item. For those participating by phone, use star nine or asterisk nine to raise your hand to request to speak. The city clerk will call upon the speakers at the appropriate time and unmute you to talk after calling you by screen name or the last four digits of your phone number if you're dialing in. Please clearly state your full name for the record at the start of your public comment. Written and email public comments will not be read during the meeting, but will be made part of the written record and provided to council members. Emails will not be monitored during the live meeting. The format of the meeting may be altered, or the meeting may be canceled if needed. You may check the status of the meeting by visiting the city's website at www.cityofpacifica.org.
Great, thank you, Clerk Coffee. So I will be leading the salute to the flag this evening. I pledge allegiance to the Thank you. Okay, we have a few special presentations this evening. And just for all those who are here for the council reorganization, we have a few items on the agenda this evening. First, we have special presentations, some consent calendar just to review. And then we have oral communications for items that are not on the agenda, and one item after that for consideration. After that, we will have the city council reorganization and we'll go over that agenda. But it won't be too far from now. So our first special presentation is a proclamation for Jim Lang's retirement from the City of Pacifica, and I will go ahead and read that out loud. Proclamation of the City of Pacifica and recognition of Jim Lang. Whereas Jim Lang, sorry, excuse me. Whereas Jim Lang is retiring from a distinguished public service career with the City of Pacifica, serving most recently as a recreation manager with the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Department. And whereas Jim Lang has served over 16 years with the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Department, beginning with his appointment to senior services food supervisor in April 2004, promoting to recreation manager in September 2017. And whereas Jim's hard work and leadership are responsible for growing and nurturing the city's senior services in what it is today. A comprehensive and thriving program which has been referred to as a gold standard for senior centers by the County of San Mateo. And whereas Jim supervision, under Jim supervision and management, the city's programs have seen quality improvement and increase in diverse offerings, as well as the implementation of innovative programming. And whereas Jim has been responsible for facility and program improvements through careful and faithful stewardship of trust funds and donations to the senior services programs with an eye towards minimizing impacts to the city's general fund resources. And whereas the culture of caring that is practiced at the center is a direct result of Jim's vision and leadership, always making sure that seniors matter. And whereas, since becoming the recreation manager in 2017, Jim has fulfilled an important role in the supervision and implementation of many of Parks, Beaches and Recreation Department events and programs. And whereas Jim's positive impact on the department, Pacifica seniors, city staff, customers, and citizens of this community will be felt for a very long time. And now therefore I, Dear Dr. Martin, Mayor of the City of Pacifica, and all its citizens, do hereby extend our grateful thanks and appreciation to Jim Lang for over 16 years of dedicated and distinguished service to the City of Pacifica, and wishes him all the best in his future endeavors done this 14th day of December, 2020. Thank you, Jim. Jim here to receive. Let me see. I don't see him on the list. Oh, there he is.
Here we go. Can you hear me?
Yeah, hi, Jim.
Yeah, how are you? Thank you. Yeah, again, I just want to, first of all, just thank the community for allowing me to do this position. It's sort of, you know, the greatest generation, I think, for nearly 17 years. It's been a privilege. And again, it's in this community you're able to do something like this because it's really the volunteers with a heart, all my efforts. Without them, none of this would have happened. And I just, I really appreciate the community's efforts, our donors, and special groups like Pacificans Care have been a vital part of our financial support. When I first started there, we got $500 a year from them. Now we're up to $25,000 a year. So it's a group, an organization that really reaches out to everybody, all our core agencies. And I'm lucky to be part of that group. And also, I heard a lot of what I did, but there was one special staff member, Janice Haynes, who was our program coordinator, who came on board with me early on and really helped make the atmosphere what it was, a positive place it is, and expand all of our programs. Again, and we went through a lot of growth. I mean, our membership is up almost 800%. Our Meals on Wheels is up, I think it's 400%. Congregate Meals were up 200, I think, 280%. So anyway, we've done a lot of growth. And what that's allowed us to do is have very little impact on the city. So for 17 years, we're very flat of what our cost to the city has been. And again, it's all of our volunteer efforts and the community's support. So thank you, Pacifica. Thank you, most of all, to our volunteers and all the staff that has contributed to our programs. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any council members wish to make a comment? Sue Vatolos?
I was going to say that I've known Jim for about 20 years, but I started thinking about it. It's probably closer to 30. So, because our kids played together. And I think you've done so much with the senior center, and we really appreciate everything that you've done. You're a really special person. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Beckmeyer?
Jim, you are an innovator. You are an inspiration. You've created programs out of dust, and they've been wildly successful. Everything you touch is golden. And I know you don't think you did it. You know you did it with the help of volunteers, but I'm telling you, you are special, and I thank you so much for what you've given to this city. It will last for a very long time.
Thank you.
Mary Beer?
Where do I start? Yes, you are very special. And I think when I first really met you, it was the beginning of the partnership. And you came out, and you helped, and you participated. And I've watched you grow this program into such a beautiful, such a beautiful program. And our seniors are so lucky to have you. And I know that this COVID was probably really hard on you because all of a sudden, everything shut down, right? And it was those folks who were at the most risk. And so what you've done for our city, you've created a program that they can come back to. And so when this is all done, they can come back and the program's going to be solid, and that's because of you. So thank you so much for everything. So much love to you, Jim.
Yeah.
Mike?
Well, I have to say, I copy and ditto everything everybody said from my four council members, as well as the public. Because I know just the fact that you have a program that has grown so well and been such an integral part of Pacifica says a lot. I mean, you have grown enrollment when the school district was declining enrollment, you know? And I mean, you just did a great job, and a lot of happy seniors. And I think that you can get the grants and everything to keep it going and expanding it. And everything speaks a testament to your staff and yourself. But the leadership is what really makes the difference. So just from my heart, thank you, Jim. Thanks.
Thank you.
And I echo what my fellow council members said. Jim, you've been an asset to this community. And there's really no words that one could really say to express their true gratitude other than, you know, this city is going to be a great loss for not having you at the helm. But I'm sure that you've set a really high bar, and there's some big shoes to fill. But I think you've set the, you've set us up well, and thank you, Jim. The public that would like to make a comment? Can we allow for that, Clerk Coffee?
Yes, if you'd like to take public comments after each proclamation, we can do those for Jim Lang now.
Yeah, sure.
Hand raised from Lynn Adams. Lynn, when you're ready, go ahead and state your name.
Yeah, hi. Hi, can you hear me? Can you see me?
We can hear you.
I just wanted to thank, Jim, I wanted to thank you also. You're not only a champion for people, you're also a champion for the environment. You've always been really supportive of all the Pacific Beach Coalition programs. And I want to thank you for your service and congratulate you on your next adventures. And just give you a big hug, actually, from the Pacific Beach Coalition. Thank you. And from me.
Okay, I will close public comments, and we will move on to our next proclamation, which is for Robert Launderville.
Mayor Martin, could you ask that Robert raise his hand in the attendees list?
Yes, Robert, if you're here, can you please raise your hand in the attendees list? If you're on your phone, hit star nine.
Mayor Martin, I think I've transitioned him over to a panelist now.
Okay, wonderful. All right, great. So this is a proclamation of the City of Pacifica on recognition of Robert Launderville. Whereas Sergeant Robert Launderville is retiring from a distinguished public service career with the Pacifica Police Department, serving most recently as police sergeant with the Pacifica Police Department. And whereas Sergeant Launderville has served over 33 years with the Pacifica Police Department, beginning with his appointment to police officer in August 1987, promoting to the rank of police corporal in August 1994, police sergeant in July of 2002, and serving as acting police captain March to June 2015. Sergeant Launderville has served in the position of detective corporal, juvenile detective sergeant, administrative sergeant, field training officer, K-9 handler. And whereas Sergeant Launderville has demonstrated dedication to the education of law enforcement officers and potential law enforcement candidates through work as a police academy instructor, department range master and weapons instructor, weapons of mass destruction response instructor, and the longest tenured member of the Pacifica Police Department, has contributed to the training and development of every sworn member. And whereas Sergeant Launderville has become a highly respected instructor in the field of active shooter response, training of officers and active shooter response techniques, and also creating and presenting curriculum on this topic for the department. And whereas Sergeant Launderville has demonstrated superior law enforcement skills and community relations ability, resulting in over 70 levels of appreciation and formal department recommendations. And whereas Sergeant Launderville was recognized as the Pacifica Police Department employee of the year in 2013. And whereas Sergeant Launderville has left an enduring legacy of the City of Pacifica and the law enforcement profession through his tireless efforts and commitment to improving public safety, quality of law enforcement services provided to the community, and training of law enforcement personnel. And now therefore I, Dear Dr. Martin, Mayor of the City of Pacifica, and all its citizens, do hereby extend our grateful thanks and appreciation to Sergeant Launderville for over 33 years dedicated and distinguished service to the City of Pacifica, and wishes him all the best in his future endeavors done this 14th day of December, 2020. Okay, do we have Sergeant Launderville? I see his name.
He's on mute, though.
I think someone's working on that, yeah?
Mayor Martin, would you like to invite council member comments while we've tried to get Sergeant Launderville unneeded?
Yes. Mike O'Neil?
I mean, what can you say? 33 years of service to the City of Pacifica in all the different capacities and the wealth of knowledge and institutional history that, you know, Robert is taking with him is just unimaginable. I mean, 33 years on the streets of Pacifica and the K-9 unit and the police academy training and the shooter and everything. I mean, what can you say about someone that served the citizens that much? I mean, except thank you very much for providing for the safety of Pacifica. You should probably write a history about Pacifica. Because you lived it. Thank you.
Yeah, I also want to echo Councilmember O'Neil. Just thank you so much for all of your years of service and for creating a culture of safety. Because we've needed you all these years, and I appreciate you so much. Thank you.
Mayor Beckmeyer?
Thank you so much for your service to our department and to our city. The chief has said many times that the department operates like family, and I'm sure after 33 years, it feels that way. I really do appreciate the time and effort that you, all of you, and you in particular, invest in the next upcoming officers, sworn officers and staff. And thank you very much for all of your service.
I agree with what everybody else said, and I can't even imagine 33 years. It's just an incredible thing. I don't know how you can retire from that. I think you're going to have to come back and be a volunteer. Thank you.
I echo what my fellow council members say. Thank you, Sergeant Launderville, for your many years of dedicated service. I see Chief Stidl here. Are we able to unmute Sergeant Launderville now?
Apparently, they're having a little bit of a difficulty. He has another sergeant working with him right now.
He may be unmuted now. Robert, talk. He looks unmuted.
The message I have is that it kicked him out, and that there was another sergeant working with him right now, trying to get him live.
Maybe you should stick with law enforcement. Do not go into technology.
There he comes. Maybe.
We see a fuzzy screen, Sergeant Launderville.
Moving that screen.
He got kicked off again.
If I may, Madam Mayor, have a moment, say a couple of words while they're trying to work that out through him. As we did talk about, he has mentored everybody in the department. He has not mentored anybody in the use of Zoom at this point. But I would like to say that, you know, that I appreciate the opportunity. Speak, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Dan Stidl, your chief of police. I've had the pleasure of working with Sergeant Launderville for almost 28 years. When I came to Pacifica in 1993, he was an officer, as was I. I quickly identified him as someone who was well-respected and extremely knowledgeable. And as we spoke of earlier, he is currently the longest-tenured member of the Pacifica Police Department. Through his mentoring as a field training officer, a department firearms instructor, and his lengthy tenure as a police academy instructor, he has trained and mentored every single member of our department who works here today, including myself, as well as many who have gone on to other places or who have retired. Sergeant Launderville is known as one of the quieter individuals in our department, as you can see tonight. His calm demeanor has served him very well in his interaction with our community members, and has also served to help focus younger officers who often seek his advice and mentoring. Sergeant Launderville's comprehensive knowledge of modern law enforcement practice and procedures has served our department and our community well, as law enforcement has evolved over the three decades in which he has served. He is known as a person who will be part of a discussion or debate at the PD, who will say very little, but when he speaks, he is often known to come up with the one point that nobody in the room had considered that frequently changes the course of the discussion. As your career comes to a close, Sergeant Launderville, I am grateful to you not only for your 33 years of service to the city and the department, but also for your leadership, your dedication, and your loyalty to the department and to the community of Pacifica. I am also grateful for your friendship. And as you embark on this next chapter of your life, know that you have left an indelible mark on our department that will last for decades to come. Congratulations, Robert.
We can see you, Sergeant Launderville. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Very good. I just wanted to thank the mayor and the members of the city council for this proclamation and recognition at this time. It's quite an honor, and I am overwhelmed with respect for the City of Pacifica. I want to thank the City of Pacifica and the Pacifica Police Department for taking a chance on me some 33 years ago and hiring me to this position. And I think I've had a fabulous and wonderful career serving the members of the public, the city, and being a member of the Pacifica Police Department. I've come away with knowing that I've made some impact on people's lives for positive, and the fact that the amount of training that I've done with officers, I think I've left some people here with a bright future and hopefully the ability to serve for many years to come. And I am going to miss who I work with. I've come to find a number of friends in this department and camaraderie, and just the coming to serve the community and being out there. After 33 years, it's going to be a very hard transition to go to becoming back to public life and not coming here every day. But thank you very much for the City of Pacifica and the Pacifica Police Department for that opportunity, for being here. It's been a great career for me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all you've done.
I just want to give one last acknowledgement to my wonderful wife, Diana, who has supported me over these years and the time that I have missed from home and special events, Christmas, birthday parties, having to go to bed alone while I was out at night working and being out on the streets. It's been very reassuring and a part of my life that's allowed me to be, put an effort into this city, knowing that I had her full support in everything I was doing.
Thank you. All right, have a wonderful retirement. We will miss you.
Thank you.
I don't see any hands raised. I will move on to our letter of commendation to Aaron Clark, who I don't
There is one hand raised.
Wonderful. Okay, great. Oh, yeah. Wayne Walterborn.
Yes, can you hear me? Yes, okay, perfect. So, Robert, I can't see anymore. Your little square vanished. Just wanted to say that I've known you and worked with you for almost 25 years. And when I first came here, you were one of my first field training officers. You successfully converted me from the Los Angeles way of doing things to the Pacifica way of doing things. And I'm here today, so you must have done something, right? And during that time, you went from a training officer to a mentor, to a contemporary, and then truly a friend. You've not only been a friend, but also one of those rare people that if I came to for a second opinion or insight, you trusted me enough to not have a filter. You gave it to me straight. And that, more than anything, helped me grow as a sergeant, helped me grow as a person. And I want to let you know that I appreciated that, even if sometimes that thought-provoking process came in mischievous ways, you know, making me think even when I didn't want to, we'll say. But your presence is one that's going to be truly missed, and not just as a contemporary mentor and trainer, but a friend. And I would worry about your future, because all you've known is police work. But I do know that Diana has other plans for you, and she's going to keep you busy. So I put my faith in her, if not you. That's all I got, Robert. You'll be missed.
It is appreciated.
We've got our hand raised. Chris Clements?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, and Sergeant Robert Launderville. My name is Chris Clements. I'm a captain with the Pacifica Police Department. And as the chief said, Sergeant Launderville has directly impacted every member of our police department. And he has a direct connection to me. Sergeant Launderville was my very first field training officer on day one in 1996 with the Pacifica Police Department. And I would not be where I am today without his guidance, tutelage, his mentorship, and his friendship. I'm forever grateful for everything that I've learned from Robert. He is truly a remarkable example of what it takes to be a police officer in this day and age. And he has served the community of Pacifica very well. And he will be missed, and I wish him all the best as he spends this well-earned retirement with his family. So, Robert, happy trails, and we look forward to keeping in touch with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Okay. I don't see any other hands raised. Thank you, Sergeant Launderville.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to our letter of commendation for Aaron Clark's retirement. And I don't think he's here, but let's go ahead and honor Aaron Clark. This is a letter of commendation to Aaron Clark on behalf of the City of Pacifica. I'm hereby pleased to write this letter of commendation for Aaron Clark, who has been an integral who has been an integral part of the city's Public Works Field Services Division since his hire on October 14, 1987, 33 years of service. Aaron started working for the city as a tree trimmer. He worked tirelessly and received certifications as an arborist, tree trimmer, line clearance tree trimmer, tree risk assessor and playground safety inspector. He was promoted from lead tree trimmer to urban forester to public works supervisor and his final position as park superintendent. Aaron also worked as a welder and has his electrical training to help the city in various projects like the Anza Pump Station project and the maintenance of city streetlights. Aaron helped Pacifica survive numerous winter storms, including three El Nino storms. Aaron was called out to residents' homes many times during the early morning hours to address fallen trees and safety hazards. Aaron keeps himself active on his personal time. He's a certified scuba diver and enjoys motorcycle racing. In 2016, Aaron held the title of champion in three divisions of the Northern California Nevada Dirt Track Racing Competition. Wow. The city of Pacifica is very fortunate to have had Aaron's service and dedication to its businesses and residences and honored, and is honored to acknowledge his many contributions as park superintendent. The city is thankful for his efforts to keep Pacifica safe and beautiful. The city is grateful for Aaron's assistance with the beautification advisory committee projects and the Arbor Day events. He is a highly respected leader, recognized by his staff, his peers, his supervisors, staff and other city departments and the city manager. The community, city commissioners and city council have greatly appreciated his dedication to helping the community. The city wishes him a well deserved retirement. Sincerely, Deirdre Martin, Mayor, City of Pacifica. Well, that is well deserved and I am not sure Aaron is here this evening to receive this. I don't see him on, but I do see a hand raised.
Hi, this is not Aaron Clark, this is Paul Toda from Free City Pacifica. I don't know if this is the right time to offer comments.
Yes, yes. For Aaron.
Yes. On the occasion of the retirement of Park Superintendent Aaron Clark, an expert arborist who has worked for the city of Pacifica for many years, Free City Pacifica would like to express its gratitude and appreciation. Mr. Clark has provided logistical support that has made the 2019 and 2020 Arbor Day celebrations possible. It is no exaggeration to say that without his support and expert guidance, these days would not have happened and the more than 50 trees we planted in this time would not be growing and thriving in our fair city. We wish Mr. Clark well in his retirement and are gratified that he will be able to enjoy the fruits of his labor for years to come, as will all of Pacifica's many residents and visitors. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. There's another hand raised.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Susan Miller, I live in Rockaway Beach and I wanted to also thank Aaron for everything that he has done since I've been in town. I've known Aaron and have used his expertise many times about tree issues and other city issues. And I'm very sad to see him go. We will very much miss his expertise and, and his availability to the community has been just really great. So I know he'll have a great retirement, but I'm very sorry to see him leave. Thank you, Aaron.
Cindy Abbott.
Hi, good evening. I'd also just like to add to appreciation for all of the years of service of Aaron Clark. I can't even imagine events going on in this city with Biden and years of understanding all the nuances of all of the infrastructure in the city of Pacifica and all of his work and knowledge for just about every single tree in town. And it's fighting time for Aaron and really allows for the city to lose his expertise. I, I hope someone did a Vulcan mind meld with him and Jim, just to know where all of the tricks and things that he's aware of. And not only in the trees, but he was also invaluable to the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission to help us understand everything from the surfaces that goes under playground equipment to how to maintain it as well as trees. So anyway, I just really appreciate everything that he's given to the city and wish him very, very well. Thank you.
Thank you Cindy. Lynn Adams.
I, I just would like to say thank you to Aaron as a citizen because I've seen him down at my park, at Edgemar Park, a number of times and up in the trees, which are very high and swaying. And he's always been amazing. He's also amazing to the Pacific Beach Coalition and been very helpful all the time. But I, I, I would just like to recall one time when I came to the park and here he was, I don't know, 60, 70 feet up in the air, you know, on a branch. And I'm like, oh my God, this is crazy. So Aaron, I love your expertise. I appreciate everything that you've done. It's always been a joy to run into you and to talk to you and it's been very numerous. So thank you, Aaron, and good luck to you.
Excellent. Okay, can I bring you back to council to send a few words out to Aaron? Sue Vaterlos.
Sorry, had to unmute. Yes, I thank you so much for all of your knowledge and I know we're going to miss that because I can see so much there and you are sometimes a man of few words, but if you look behind them, you can read it. So I just want to thank you very much for everything you've done here. I'm sorry you're leaving and, but I hope you have a good time after. Thank you.
Thanks Lynn. Mike O'Neill.
Yeah, I do, I also wanted to thank Aaron for his many years of service. And I know his son and my, his son Brendan and my son were both in school at the same time and everything. And his son, for a while there was a teacher at Terranova, so he's still part of the community there, although I think he might have left Terranova. But I did want to thank Aaron, I was a liaison for the beautification committee and his extensive knowledge of trees was truly amazing and how, and I hope he's willing to be an advisor to pick the right kind of tree for Palmetto Avenue since everybody wants it, but we're having a hard time. But thank you, Aaron, for all the work you've done, the public works, as well as the trees and everything else you've done. You are leaving a very beautiful legacy for Pacifica.
Mayor Beer.
Aaron, thank you so much for everything, you know, we're neighbors. And so I'll see you behind the school, but you're on your bike and I'm on my scooter because that has happened. So thank you so much for all of your years of service, another 33 year person. It's amazing. I will see you and I do thank you.
Mayor Proton Beckmeyer.
Um, I'm very sorry to see you go, Aaron. You are a tremendous asset to the city and the only thing I'm thrilled about is that you live in Valmar. You've taught me so much in just a very short amount of time. And I've always appreciated that you're willing to share your knowledge, even with someone who doesn't have the background to necessarily be conversant. So thank you very much for all you've done for us and we'll see you around.
Aaron, my man, what can I say? Thank you very much. I'm excited for your retirement, especially because you might have time to join Tree City Pacifica. Look forward to seeing you at Oceana Market and thanks again for all your, your dedicated years of service to make the Pacifica beautiful. Okay. We've confirmed that he is not here. Okay. So we will move on to our consent calendar. And this is the time where any council members would pull any items from the consent calendar to speak on and/or participants would pull an agenda item. If you would like to make a comment on any of the consent items, raise your hand right now so we can pull it from the consent calendar. If you are in the public. Item six. And I'd like to comment on item 12. Mike O'Neill.
I'd like to move that we approve the consent calendar minus item six and 12.
Can we have a roll please?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Council Member Beer.
Hey, for the consent calendar minus item six and 12, I had a motion by O'Neill and I, I heard the second from Vaterlos, is that correct?
Mary was first.
Yeah, okay. With the second by Council Member Beer, for the vote, Council Member O'Neill.
Yes.
Council Member Beer. Council Member Vaterlos.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
And consent calendar minus item six and 12 passed unanimously.
Okay, great. I will comment on item 12 first because it is a little bit shorter. This is the adoption of the resolution declaring the campus of returns and results of the general municipal election of November 3, 2020. I wanted to say congratulations to Council Member Vaterlos and I wish you well. The city's in pretty good hands. Well, you have the experience to speak of. And Council Member-elect Tiger Jazz Big Stick, also I want to send my congratulations to you as well. I know that you will be very good at your job, so. That's all I had to say on that item. And then on item number six, hang on, let me pull up my notes here. Okay, so this is the letter, a comment letter to the California Coastal Commission regarding sea level rise working group joint statement on adaptation planning. So this was to authorize me to send a letter of comment to the California Coastal Commission regarding sea level rise working group joint statement on adaptation planning. My feedback is that I, I personally do not want to send a letter to the coastal, the California Coastal Commission. It was, this was, I think, Mike, in our agenda packet, I think it was your proposal to send a letter of comment. So I didn't feel that I wanted to send a letter of comment. So my feedback is such that on the actual letter, there's a statement that says the California Coastal Commission's review of our basically local coastal plan updates must honor this local authority and expertise which is recognized in the coastal act, rather than ignore the economic, environmental, legal and social realities of local governments that work so hard with their communities to balance. My thought is that I feel like that's a little bit, no offense to the person who wrote it, who was on this call. I feel like it sounds a little pompous to me and that, you know, hey, we know everything. But when I think of the California Coastal Commission, I think of them as the basically authority to protect sort of our coast and, and that's, that's not, that's actually what they're supposed to do. So number one, I have always been in favor of smart development. So that's sort of just my initial feedback and so a few things, I'd either recommend revising that statement or taking it out altogether and just sort of making a general statement saying that we've done a lot of work on our local coastal plan and we hope that you can work with us. Or, that's my first op, that's in any order. The second option is you wait on this and wait till I am not on council anymore, push to the next meeting and have the, the incoming mayor sign it or take it off of the mayor's plate entirely and have a vote and it'll come from council or something like that. So I, I, my first vote is that we don't even send a letter of comment, but I, I'm 100% sure that I'm going to be outvoted on that. Mike.
Being, I requested that we send this letter is because the Coastal Commission is this Friday having a study session with the League of California Cities Coastal Cities Group, trying to work out some of the issues that have arisen between local control and the, and the Coastal Commission. There, it's not only seawalls, there's many other issues regarding short term rentals, transportation, homeless issues, parking, ADUs. All of these things are issues that are best decided, I, I feel as a council person, by the local entity that's actually living with the decisions versus the Coastal Commission. And so I, that's why I asked Kevin to look at it and compose a letter that, you know, carries that forward to the Coastal Commission because it is an issue that a lot of cities and the counties are also facing up and down the coast. So just kind of, and I, I can appreciate where your viewpoint is, Deirdre. And I, I would propose that, you know, and move forward as is, but we'll see what other council members say.
Councilmember Vaterlos.
I didn't really think the letter was strong enough. I thought it was, I mean, it, there are so many things that we've gone over as a city, like managed retreat and that we didn't agree with managed retreat and that we agreed to save our businesses, et cetera. And I didn't think that was there. I think we do need to keep local control. It's really important and this meeting's on Thursday. So we either are going to vote it tonight because we can't wait longer till the next meeting to, to decide because there's only one hour comment period at the meeting. And so therefore that's why we're sending a letter to them. Thank you.
Councilmember Beer. Oh, wasn't you, Mayor Proton Beckmeyer.
I agree with Councilmember Vaterlos and O'Neill, I think we need to send this letter. And I think what's, the, the statement that you're reacting to, I think is kind of the crux of the issue. Because in their draft document, actually their joint statement on adaptation planning that was recently approved, they do speak to, the Coastal Commission staff do speak to the issue of working with local jurisdictions and, and acknowledgement of that there is not a one size fits all solution. So the way I see it, it has to be a partnership. We have to work together to make this work. But I think it's very important for them to understand what our needs are as a local jurisdiction. I think Pacifica is fairly unique among coastal cities in terms of the amount of pre-coastal act development that we already had in place before the coastal act was, was passed. And I think it's going to be really a very important distinction for Pacifica to point this out and to make it clear that we have our local plans and, and we have the reasoning behind why we've made those plans. So I feel it's important for us to send the letter and the meeting is Thursday this week. So if you're not willing to sign it, perhaps it can go forward in some other way.
So going on what you just said, Mayor Proton Beckmeyer about working together. So do you think, can, can we hear that sentence again? Because does that actually reflect that? Like maybe we can add something in because I do think the letter needs to be sent, but I don't think that that sentence represents working together with the Coastal Commission.
I'm looking at it right now. Which paragraph is it in?
You want me to read the sentence?
Yeah.
The Coastal Commission's review of LCLUP updates must honor this local authority and expertise which is recognized in the coastal act, rather than ignore the economic, environmental, legal and social realities local governments work so hard with their communities to balance.
Can I, one, I think one of the reasons I would like to see this move forward is the fact that this is an urgent issue for every county on the coast, as well as like, I think it's 250 cities on the coast. And they have only, the Coastal Commission has only allocated one hour for verbal public testimony. The only way to convey anything is via the, the, the letter, okay? Two, local control, Seela, if you look at Crescent City and granted, I will concede, it's like the only place on the coast that I know of where the sea level's actually receding, okay, going lower because of the Tectonic Plate. However, the Coastal Commission is still mandating that there has to be. However, the Coastal Commission is still mandating that there has to be commanded retreat in an area where the ocean is actually getting further away from the land. So I just think that that's what's important about this, is trying to get the local control to decide something about ADUs, affordable housing, homeless issues. I mean, there was a homeless encampment that was in a, I think it was in Van Nuys. I don't hold me to that, but I think it was in Van Nuys where there was a homeless encampment in the city, and the Coastal Commission was saying this was development and they'd have to clear it out. Okay, so I think it's really affecting the social issues and social, economic, environmental factors in California as a whole, so.
Okay, my, my, my proposal would be then that we actually just have the city manager send the letter, or you postpone the vote till the end of this meeting when I'm dismissed? And the new mayor can say it.
There, there are other options, Madam Mayor, if you, if you'd like to hear another option. And that would, that the council could ask that the letter be sent as it, as is. Have the mayor who may be selected later on this evening be the one to sign it. Because in fact.
Yeah. You guys, are you okay all with that? I will still vote no on this, but.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
You're not willing to even entertain the discussion of revision, so. Okay. We have a, somebody raising their hand here. There's a couple people raising their hand, actually.
Once Quick Coffee has the clock up, I can call our first speaker will be Chris Redfield. Please state your name for the record.
There we go, Chris Redfield. Good evening. This kind of surprised me, actually. I read the letter. I thought it was a very, very good letter. It definitely states the city's position in a strong sense. I agree, it could have been stronger, but you get more, you know, more, you know, more bees with honey than you do with vinegar. So I agree with that. We need to work with the Coastal Commission, but this needs to be a local plan. Everything is different. Every city is different. There is no set standard. And I'm, I'm kind of surprised that, you know, that Mayor Martin doesn't want to sign it. I understand it. It just surprised me at the last minute. I do agree with going forward with having the incoming mayor. And again, I understand it. I can't, I can't object to it per se, from a, you know, from her personal standpoint. But I do agree the letter needs to go forward with the statement. I like it. I like the way it's written. Again, it could have had a little more, but again, it's, you need to work with the Coastal Commission. You cannot oppose it, but you need to stand up. You can't sit down. You need to stand up. And this is what needs to be done, in my opinion. So I think the resolution, or not the resolution, but the proposal forward with the incoming mayor to sign that letter and go forward with a Thursday meeting, I am all in favor of. I thank you and I respect every one of you, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Next we'll hear from Cindy Abbott, followed by Jeff Gueye. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, this is Cindy Abbott. And I've read this letter nine or 10 times now, and I'm really struggling with it. And I'd also like to suggest that it not be sent. I've reviewed the joint statement on adaptation planning that was, by the way, approved at the California Coastal Commission meeting in November. This approval was after a long and productive series of meetings that took place over almost a year and a half and a process that will be continuing in 2021, and I'm sure for many years afterwards. Pacifica is a unique city, but we face many of the same issues that other cities along the California coast do. To state that the Coastal Commission's review of local coastal land use plan updates must honor local authority and expertise is questionable to me. Experts are the staff of the Coastal Commission who spend all of their time working through and assisting cities and counties in upholding the State of California's coastal act. We can learn a lot and move forward with sound planning strategies by listening to the input of the Coastal Commission's staff and consulting experts that are too often dismissed by the city of Pacifica. What should be highlighted is this relationship requires a strong partnership and collaborative spirit that includes our willingness to listen intently to the input and expertise of the Coastal Commission. To pull out the importance of a phased approach to planning is somewhat understandable as currently there are very few funding mechanisms to provide the support needed for coastal cities to address the real and extreme threats we face due to the climate crisis and sea level rise. However, to not also stress that these reasonable planning horizons must proceed with a sense of urgency, including defining the thresholds that trigger future planning is a miss for the city that will leave Pacifica unprepared and not shovel or financially ready when the time comes. Flutter has a really bad feeling to me. When I first read it, it just felt disingenuous. And I also suggest it not be sent. Thank you.
Jeff Gueye, please state your name for the record.
There we go. Hi, I'm Jeff Gueye. I strongly believe that this record, this letter should be sent. I think it's ridiculous that the Coastal Commission gives one hour for 217 cities to voice their opinion and the people who are represented in those cities, I think that's disingenuous. And just shows how the Coastal Commission doesn't care what we think and will continue to push their agenda on to us. As Chris Redfield said, this is a local coastal plan. It is not a California Coastal Commission plan. The people who know best about the city are the residents and the officials who work in that city. And to have a group 500 miles away dictate what we should be doing, I agree with Sue Vaterlos. This is not strong enough. I'm happy to have it sent as is. And I'd like to have a unanimous consent on it to be sent. But if we can just have it signed by the new incoming mayor, I'm more than happy to get that out. But this is very important that we get this out and have our statement told yet again to the Coastal Commission and have them understand that they work for us. And we will work with them in a capacity that works well for our city, but nobody knows our city better than us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Hey, I don't see any other hands raised. I will back to.
Mayor Martin, we have another hand raised.
There we go. Okay.
Elisa, you're next speaker.
I agree with Mayor Martin that at a minimum, that sentence must be struck from the letter. It does strike me as very arrogant. And we should be stressing a partnership with the Coastal Commission and not just declaring that we know what's best in all cases for our city. Pacifica has done a good job in the managed retreat of the Lindemar area that has protected the beach for all residents and visitors. That area is the biggest draw in all of town. On the other hand. There continues to be erosion of the cliffs.
Your break, Elisa.
We do not have those experts here in hand on the city staff, and we need their expertise. And this needs to be a partnership, period, or else we may be losing more buildings and more lives to coastal erosion.
Thank you, Elisa. Okay, oh, there's another hand.
We go now to Kimberly Williams.
Hi, this is Kimberly Williams, and I am representing the San Mateo County Surf Rider chapter. And I concur with Mayor Martin and with Cindy Abbott and also with the previous speaker, Elise Bowles. I think this should be about a partnership, and we should be looking at where we can come together with the Coastal Commission to solve some of these problems. And I would ask those members who spoke, Mr. Gillette, I believe, and Chris Redfield and others to ask yourself a question. If there are solutions that would meet your needs, that aren't the traditional solution that you're pushing and that experts who have been working on these things with more modern techniques and more experience can work with us to make those happen, if it would meet the need, would you consider it? Because I don't see that people are opening their minds to alternatives to the things that they've seen for the last 30 years. And, and that's what I'd like to add to this conversation, that we all open our minds to new solutions that could meet the needs that we're seeking. So thank you for that, and thank you, Mayor Martin.
Thanks, Kimberly. Okay, I don't see any hands raised. I see actually another hand raised. No, it's down now. Okay. I think Sue Degree wants to make a comment.
Go ahead, Sue Degree.
Thank you. It's just a little difficult on, I'm sorry. One of my major concerns always is how many of the public at large even knows that this is on the agenda tonight? That goes for just about any, I've had this concern for years, and during COVID, it's even worse. Another thing is some of the comments I hear, it concerns, it's concerning because I wonder if even the coastal act is really totally read or understood. The coastal commission actually works for the people of California. It was the public that studied an ordinance on the ballot very carefully and chose to go this direction. It's never been against the local cities. It's always been willing to work together. And we've gone a little bit off track here in Pacifica by some misrepresentations of it and downplaying the Coastal Commission, which was only going to make it harder to work with them and make things drag out forever because they have a mandate from the people of California, not from the Coastal Commission, but from the people of California. So I hope, you know, I think we should do a better job of understanding the coastal act itself. Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. You have another hand raised?
A call-in listener with the phone number ending 9654. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Margaret Goodell. I'm getting away from the computer, which wouldn't let me on. I'm now speaking on the phone. Pacifica appears to be plunging toward ever bigger and better seawalls motivated by the threat of lawsuits despite climate and sea level rise realities. Do we pretend, in the face of poor planning decisions of the past, that to continue to defend those decisions is the best course? I agree with Deirdre that the words of honoring cities' unique tailored adaptations is inappropriate. It's ill-timed. It does not serve Pacifica for this council to alienate the commission. That's point two. At point three, what does regional planning mean? Do we actually sacrifice the Sharp Park Beach and its mitigations and visitors to Lindemar? Where federal laws against disturbing protective species are already not honored and are being broken routinely? Certainly phased approaches and reasonable planning horizons are important. What these mean for Pacifica's reality is that we should start now to begin planning for a future when our imagined seawalls don't work and our gravity-fed wastewater infrastructure must be reversed. Setting up Pacifica as an adversary to the Coastal Commission does us no good. It's actively harmful. Planning ahead means looking clear-eyed at Pacifica's entire economic capacity and questioning our will to stand alone against the Pacific, the Pacific Ocean. A gentler tone might serve us well. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we'll bring it back to council.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Mayor, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. I just wanted to offer a couple observations. Several of the speakers spoke about emphasizing collaboration with the Coastal Commission. And I just want to note that I took a lot of effort in this letter, in the introduction and in the conclusion to really highlight the collaborative working relationship that city staff does have with the Coastal Commission. Day in and day out, we're working very closely with them, and I wanted to make sure to emphasize that. And the Coastal Commission, and part of the origin of the League of California Cities Coastal Cities Group in this joint annual workshop is in that spirit of collaboration. So, you know, to frame the context, the three specific comments that you have in there, which are teeing off of the ideas that are raised in the joint statement, are more specific to those ideas in the joint statement. And particularly the one that's being commented about, really is pointing to the fact that we've experienced and have talked with Coastal Commission staff about how our technical expertise locally about our zoning ordinances, about our general plan policies is, is an area of authority and expertise locally that we want to continue to work collaboratively with the Coastal Commission on. So that's part of the frame, framing of what that comment is meaning and is consistent with what the entire Coastal Cities Group is discussing, discussing with the Coastal Commission and working on. In addition to, you know, not all, there's not one-size-fits-all solutions and, you know, it's, I've talked with the executive director of the Coastal Commission on numerous occasions about working together and respecting our respective authorities. Theirs under the coastal act and ours under what our local land use and zoning documents and California Constitution and our ordinances adhere to. So I just wanted to make sure to provide that framework from, you know, what, what some of the comments were.
Thanks, Kevin. Mary?
City Manager Woodhouse, thank you so much for framing that. I really appreciate it. You know, most of the work that I do in my day job is around collaboration, and so it's really important, I think, to include that. And so I appreciate you framing it, and I feel like we can move forward.
I'd like.
Mike, you're going to make a motion. I just think I have one more comment. Kevin, thank you for that, and I appreciate and respect that you did that throughout the, the letter. My thought was that we were already working collaboratively with the Coastal Commission. And there is a very strongly worded sentence in here that basically puts them on notice that they're ignoring some stuff, which we all know that they're not going to ignore when it comes down to it. So thank you. But no, thank you. Mike O'Neal.
Hi, I'd like to make a motion that item number six be sent to the Coastal Commission, signed by whomever has elected the new mayor tonight, and I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Vaterlos. Can we roll call vote, please?
Councilmember O'Neal.
Yes.
Councilmember Beer.
Yes.
Council, Councilmember Vaterlos.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Martin. Mayor Martin.
No.
And item number six passes with a vote of four to one.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I think we're still gonna need a vote on item 12.
Ah, thank you for the reminder.
I make a motion to pass consent item number 12.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Beer.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Councilmember Beer.
Yes.
Councilmember Beer had a yes. Councilmember Votoros.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
And item number 12 passes unanimously.
Okay, wonderful. All right, moving on to oral communications. This is the time reserved to raise your hand for something that is not on the agenda. We have one hand raised. So, if you're making a comment on the council reorganization, are we saving that for later? Clerk Coffee, is that for...
Yes, the comments on the reorganization for outgoing mayor and incoming council members in reorg will occur during the reorganization meeting.
Okay, which will be very shortly. So if you're here for that, lower your hand and just stay tuned. But we do have a few hands raised for oral communications, which is for things that are not on the agenda this evening. So if you are raising your hand to talk about the council reorg, lower your hand. Otherwise, we do have a few hands raised, so.
Mayor Martin, our first speaker is Suzanne Moore, followed by Carolyn Harameo. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. Suzanne Moore of Pacific Housing for All and retired nurse, family nurse practitioner. On December 8th, Louise Rogers, the county's chief of health, reported that COVID vaccines could be administered to some frontline healthcare workers at the end of December. The initial supply will not be enough to vaccinate all of the county's 38,000 healthcare workers, but it's an important start. The second booster vaccine will be given 21 days after the first vaccine, and immunity could occur as early as two weeks following the booster. Additional information was shared by the healthcare of the homeless farmworkers board by our medical officer. COVID kite cases are rising. The fall surge will possibly have three peaks, the first occurring now, three weeks after Thanksgiving, which coincides with group celebrations held over that holiday. Unless we choose otherwise, we can expect a peak three weeks after Christmas, and again, three weeks after New Year's. Our healthcare providers will not be immune as they assist the public during these likely peaks. This is a real risk. Our healthcare system could be overwhelmed, and there won't be enough qualified staff to see us through this pandemic. We have a choice that we can make over the holidays. We can choose to slow the COVID spread and keep our healthcare and essential workers safer. Don't hold indoor celebrations with family and friends. Meet outdoors, masked and at least six feet apart. Avoid non-essential indoor activities outside your home at this time, and listen for further advice from Public Health. Support merchants. Purchase online, buy takeout, get gift cards to assure future celebrations. Lend social support. Make calls, FaceTime, write letters, and send cards. The homeless are at an increased risk because they don't have a home to shelter. If possible, give to the Pacifica Resource Center and Second Harvest. They both provide food and resources to our homeless and those at risk. I'm grateful to the Board of Supervisors for their leadership in the purchase of Coastside Inn, the first homeless housing on the coast. In my neighborhood, overnight parking on Oceana was recently restricted adjacent to Public Works. I understand that employee and visitor parking for Public Works is important, but I believe it's more important to retain previously approved overnight homeless parking in this pandemic. I strongly urge the city remove signs restricting parking on this block. For this holiday season, let's give a gift of increased safety. May all stay safe and well this holiday season and through 2021. Thank you all. Happy holidays.
Carolyn Harameo, please state your name for the record. You'll be followed by Lynn Adams.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Harameo, and this evening I want to begin my remarks with thanks and appreciation to Mayor Martin for her years of service and support for housing advocates during this time. On December 8th, members of Pacifica Housing for All were thrilled to hear San Mateo County Board of Supervisors vote unanimously to purchase a motel in Happling Bay to be used as the shelter for the unhoused on the coast. The county manager explained that providing this housing was not only necessary for the safety of all county residents, but that it was a moral responsibility for the supervisors. Later, we learned that Redwood City Council repealed the ordinance that made it illegal for anyone to sleep overnight in a motorhome parked on the street. By repealing this ordinance, the council provided a legal place for those living in motorhomes to park overnight while waiting to be admitted into the city's safe parking program. So naturally, we were very saddened to learn that Pacifica had put up more signs on Oceana next to the Public Works offices to eliminate overnight parking spaces for those living in motorhomes. We urge you during this time, this pandemic, this holiday season, this cold winter season, to repeal this decision and remove those signs. Thank you.
Thank you, town.
Lynn Adams, you're our next speaker. You'll be followed by Anita Reese.
Hi, Honorable Mayor Deirdre Martin and council members. It's, I just wanted to share with you that, and I wanted to extend a thank you to all the volunteers who have been serving and picking up litter throughout our city and our coast through the Street to Beach Program that we've had to do instead of our regular monthly cleanups. I wanted to report to you that we have had about 5,000 volunteers, I think probably more than that at this moment, who have picked up as much litter, more litter than we actually have collected in 2018 with all of our monthly cleanups with all of Earth Day and Coastal Clean Up Day. So we've removed about 10 tons of trash from our streets and beaches. We've annihilated the record for cigarette butts that we've collected. Went from 186,000, 187,000 from last year to over 230,000 this year. And all of that stuff is not going to be going into the ocean. And I want to thank the Street to Beach volunteers all up and down the coast. We have people all over California cleaning up, and that stuff all would come out through the bay and back out to us through the ocean. So I just want to let you know that we've been working very hard to, to kind of enable people and empower people and kind of get people out there. I want to invite the public to join the Street to Beach Program. You can do a lot wherever you are, whether it's at the beach, or on the street, or in your neighborhood. You can make a difference. So, thank you to the volunteers, and please join our group through this Street to Beach Program at www.pacificbeachcoalition.org.
Thanks, Lynn.
Anita Reese, you're our next speaker, followed by Delia McGrath. Anita Reese?
Hello? Sorry, I was talking. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Anita Reese with the Pacifica Resource Center. I want to thank the city and the community for your ongoing support while we continue to respond to COVID and its impact on Pacifica residents. Our office continues to be open to the community with limited hours that we're open to the public. So we are open to visitors Monday and Tuesday mornings, Wednesday and Thursday afternoons, and we're open our regular Friday hours, 9 to 1. And when our office is closed to visitors, we are available by phone only. We can be reached at 650-738-7470, or by email at info@packresourcecenter.org, or at our website at packresourcecenter.org. We distributed groceries and gift cards for Thanksgiving to 556 Pacificans from 204 families last month, and we, to date, have provided 219 children with gifts or gift cards from 113 families, and will continue to enroll and provide services and support to folks for our Holiday Joy Program until we close for the holidays on December 23rd. We had planned to distribute Holiday Joy as a drive-through on December 5th, but had to cancel unexpectedly. But I want to thank the Assistant City Manager, Wermeyerster, and City Manager Woodhouse for working with us to find a location to do that, even though we weren't able to use it. We continue to help folks who are unable to pay their rent or mortgage. If any renter or homeowner needs help paying their December or any past due rent or mortgage, please call PRC or contact us by email. And I also want to thank Councilmember Votoros for the information that she shared about the RV park accepting older motorhomes. As a result of that information, we revisited the RV park and have temporarily housed two of our motorhome households there while we continue to work with them to become housed. So thank you very much for that information. We also continue to provide groceries. They're being delivered to seniors and at-risk by monthly, and other folks are encouraged to attend our drive-through distribution on Wednesdays in the parking lot at the American Legion Hall at 555 Fuel. We will be there through the 23rd of December, so we're not canceling any December distributions. So please send folks our way, either by calling PRC or by showing up to the American Legion Hall. If people are signed up in advance, they have an appointment time. Otherwise, we ask folks to come at 3:30, and then we'll serve them as quickly as possible. And as always, if someone comes across somebody who is unhoused, living on the streets in an encampment or a vehicle, please have them get in touch with our outreach specialist, Daniel Gardner. His number is 575-4861, or by email at ucutreach@packresourcecenter.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita.
Go now to Delia McGrath. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Delia McGrath. I'm a 42-year resident homeowner of Pacifica, and I just came this evening to essentially thank Mayor Martin for your years of service and serving for the mayor. I feel like you provided, you've been courageous, you've been compassionate, and showed responsible leadership. I think you've been a role model for a publicly elected official, and I appreciate the wisdom of your leadership. You've been unwavering in your commitment to all the residents, including those who are unhoused, and we're gonna miss you on the council. And I just wanted to make sure I could show my appreciation and great respect for all that you've done for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Delia. And just for everyone else, we're, I know, I'm gonna let Wayne talk, because I know he's probably has another meeting to get to, but for everyone else, we're gonna hold comment for council reorg for the next item coming up, but let's let Wayne talk.
Thank you, Mayor Martin and City Council. I just, I left the Nobry City Council due to current limits. I've served it for nine years, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank each and one of you for all the hard work and the collaborations we've done together. I really enjoyed your support and your friendship, and it's been an honor for me to represent you on the social government's work on housing and other issues. And I also want to congratulate Mayor Martin for your outstanding leadership during these tough times, really unprecedented times. And it's really been my honor to serve with you as a board director on the Peninsula Clean Energy, where we eliminated 1,000 ton greenhouse gas and provided batteries to medical, to receive batteries to medical devices for senior dependents. And as I take this opportunity to also congratulate incoming Mayor Beckmeyer, who I've known for a little, for a while, and also congratulations on reelection of Sue Votoros, and also member-elect Big Stick. As the president of the California, as past president of the California League of Pacific Islander Caucus, and the current president of San Mateo County Asian Pacific Islander Caucus, I want to thank Mayor Martin and the city of Pacifica for your supporting and denouncing the assaults against Asians. It was very, very meaningful to us, and helped us a lot because there were assaults going in San Mateo County, and that kind of gave us a little bit, eased our tension. And your support and your, and your look for diversity and equality means a lot to us. In summary, I just, it's been a deep and profound honor to work with each of you, and I just want to say how lucky I am to have you as friends. I wish you, your staff, the city of Pacifica citizens, the best, best wishes for a safe and healthy future. And yeah, some of you might know too, I used to be a, I grew up in Pacifica for 17 years, and I used, I served on the youth council and was in civil arbitral. So Pacifica has a special place in my heart. Congratulations again, and thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thanks for your service, Wayne. Hope to see you soon. Okay, we will close public comments and bring it back to council communications. Sue Votoros, did you...
You know what? I went to tons of meetings, and I think that we were, I should have, I read right through there. I must have missed it. CK reorganization, the CK legislative, I did attend the, I'm sorry, the COVID Recovery Council, and I have six pages of notes, which I'm going to send on to Suzanne Moore. And, sorry, many, and I went to the, the tree, I'm sorry, I can't talk, because I wasn't expecting to do this. I went to the booths yesterday in Eureka Square, and I was happy to see the number of people there, considering it was raining, Santa riding around on his motorcycle, and try to support local businesses. Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Mike?
I just wanted to take, my committees really didn't meet this, this month, and I had a conflict for the Airport Roundtable with a VC meeting here in Pacifica, but I just wanted to wish everybody happy holidays. And also, please take and patronize the local businesses, gift certificates, or the restaurants, even if we go purple, we can still order takeout or delivery. So I would really, they're really in a hard time right now, so I would really urge everybody to shop locally, shop Pacifica, and help the merchants here, because if you're in a school and you want to have a fundraiser, that's who you go to. Oh, Depot, Lowe's, Dacys, they don't give you nothing, but the local merchants are the ones that do give you the gift certificates. So please support them, and if you buy in Pacifica, you support the city also with sales tax. So, happy holidays to everybody, and that's it.
Thanks, Mike. Mary?
Hi, yeah, thank you, Mayor Martin. I appreciate you a lot. I know it says my internet connection's unstable, so can you see me? Can you hear me?
We can hear you. You break in and out, but we can hear you mostly.
Okay, because it's important. I want to take a moment to recognize the passing of Rob Piccolotti. Our community has lost a great man, and I cannot even scratch the surface when I say that he was a phenomenal athlete, a dedicated father. I'm gonna use the words of my brother Dan to say that Rob was unlaboringly nice, had a dry sense of humor, and was wittier than you could ever imagine. He would help you anytime to do anything, and you'll be greatly missed. But I'm sending my love and condolences and respect to the Piccolotti family tonight, and I'd like to request that we close the meeting in Rob Piccolotti's honor.
Yes, I second that. Thank you, Mary. Sue Beckmeyer?
Um, I attended the Beautification Advisory Committee and the Economic Development Committee as council liaison, and the Beautification Advisory Committee's reworking some plans that they'll be bringing forward to council, I think at the second meeting in January, around the, what was formerly called the Mayor's Beautification Awards. They have some proposals about changing that a bit and broadening it, and expanding it a little bit more. a little bit more. And there was a lot of discussion about the Cabrillo Bioswales on Crespe Drive, which are being looked at, and some partnership projects with, with clubs and organizations in the city. The Rotary Club in particular has a new environmental emphasis, and they have a number of different priority areas, and one of them is environmental. So, there are a few projects that they're interested in expanding their portfolio. They're already doing the Grace McCarthy Overlook and some very large planted areas on Palmetto near the golf course, but there's a few other items that they're interested in pursuing. So, that was pretty much beautification advisory and economic development. Onboarding three new committee members, four new committee members, all of whom are really getting engaged right away. Work has been done on helping to promote merchant-led initiatives and events in town. So, the Sharp Park Merchants had an event weekend before last, and trying to help get the word out about those events, support our local businesses and restaurants. That's for me.
Thanks, Sue. And for me, I just want to reiterate that we are still in the middle of a pandemic, and thanks to Mike for that information, and Sue Votarlos, I would just recommend also keep that information coming. I'd also like to make a recommendation that at every council meeting, there is some sort of a pandemic update from mayor or, or city manager. I don't know about you, but the pandemic and the virus has seemed to actually gotten a little bit too close for comfort. It feels to me like everyone I talk to now actually knows one or two people and at least three people that have died. It feels like we were in a bubble that was protected in Pacifica, but that is not the case anymore, and our circles are getting smaller. So, as a reminder, during this holiday season, please protect yourself, please protect others, especially those that are in the vulnerable groups. Continue to wear your mask, continue to be very diligent and vigilant about your washing of hands and touching of things. I know we still all have lots of shopping to do, let's try to keep it local as much as possible and gift certificates as much as possible, and I wish everyone well. So, and Mary, I echo all the sentiments about Robbie Piccolotti, and I send all my, my love and hugs to their family. So, we will move on to council, our staff communications. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Martin and Mayor Protem Beckmeyer, and council members, Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I will segue from the comments about COVID-19 protection, continuing that, that is ultimately important, especially during this holiday season, and I'll segue from that message into the report out that last week, we held a very successful testing event in the old parking lot in conjunction with the county and utilizing volunteers to run this walk-up testing event. We had more than a hundred and twenty tests performed, and while for privacy reasons, we don't know where those that got tested live, we do know from observation from our participants, our volunteers, and the police department that there were many Pacificans that did get tested. So, it's, in this time especially, it's great to have very convenient and local testing. So, I wanted to do a special shout-out to Captain Glasgow for his coordination efforts on that event. It went very smoothly. Director Perez wanted me to make sure to announce that the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission is meeting this Wednesday. They often don't have a December meeting, but they are meeting this Wednesday, and one of the main items on their agenda is continuing the important discussion about the surf camps policy, as well as other items on the agenda. And finally, I did want to mention that from the meeting a couple weeks ago, the council direct that we send a support letter for HR 530, which is the Accelerating Wireless Broadband Development by Empowering Local Communities Act 2019, that Congresswoman Eschew and Congresswoman Spear sponsored in 2019. That letter went out in the mail today to the chairperson of the House Committee on Energy and Commerce, as well as the chairperson of the Subcommittee on Communications and Technology, which is where that piece of legislation currently resides, with expressing the hope that this piece of legislation, which would work to repeal some of the tight FCC regulations and bring more local control back to cities of wireless facilities, expressing the hope that that legislation can gain some traction in 2021. So, that letter went out today, and I'll be providing a copy of that to the council, and those were my only announcements.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, so, we have no public hearings, but we have one item for consideration, which is consideration and adoption of resolution approving Third Amendment to the employment agreement between the City of Pacifica and Kevin Woodhouse as city manager. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be giving a staff report tonight. You'll recall that back in September of 2017, the city first entered into an employment agreement with Kevin Woodhouse to perform city manager services. That contract set forth the terms and obligations of the contract. That contract was then subsequently amended twice, and as provided for in the agreement, the council held a performance evaluation for the city manager in November of this year, and one of the outcomes of that evaluation was the council set up a subcommittee made up of the mayor, Mayor Martin and Mayor Protem Beckmeyer, who negotiated contract amendments with the city manager. Those contract amendments, and then the council directed, the subcommittee directed me to put those contract amendments into the form of the Third Amendment, which you have before you tonight, and that Third Amendment provides that the annual base salary for the city manager will be increased by two percent to $240,000 and $332. And with those adjustments, the city manager's compensation will be a total compensation of still being seven-point-four-one percent below median for comparable cities. The Third Amendment also provides for $4,712 increase to the city manager's deferred compensation, which would increase his annual deferred compensation payment $10,956. And finally, the employment agreement does reflect updated city contributions to the city manager's health insurance plan, which is consistent with what is provided to other department directors and is set forth in Exhibit A to the contract amendment. But this time, I would just ask and recommend that the council adopt the resolution before you, which will adopt and authorize execution of the Third Amendment to the city manager's employment, and I'm available for questions.
Any questions from council? We have two public comments. Do you have a comment? Our first comment is from Chris Redfield. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening again, council. Chris Redfield, I urge council to adopt the resolution approving the Third Amendment to the employment agreement of Kevin Woodhouse. Mr. Woodhouse has shown skills managing the many challenges that have come before him. My opinion, shown admirable abilities, particularly in delegate. Pacifica can move forward, engage city manager, we're lucky to have him. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. We don't have any more hands raised, actually, so I will close public comment, bring it back to council. I just want to say, nice job, Kevin. We're lucky to have you. I agree.
I move that we approve Agenda Item, I'm looking it up here, Agenda Item number thirteen, as stated.
Second.
Is adopting the resolution.
I move that we adopt the resolution as stated. Do I need to read the whole thing?
No, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
The motion was by Councilmember O'Neill with a second by Councilmember Votarlos. Roll call vote, starting with Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Councilmember B.R.
Yes.
Councilmember Votarlos.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
And item number thirteen passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. We will move on to our Special Order of Business, our City Council Reorganization. The, our first item is outgoing mayor's remarks. So, I am the outgoing mayor, and I get to make remarks. I'm not going to drone on about, with, by reading the long list of accomplishments that we have achieved in the last four years, but I want to tell you how proud I am of what we have done together, we, the community. So, instead, I'd like to use this time to thank you and the many people and organizations who have worked just as hard as I have, if not harder, for the last four years. So, if I miss you, please forgive me and know that you are in my heart. I want to thank the Pacifica, the Pacific Beach Coalition, especially Lynn Adams, Pacifica Climate Committee, especially Cynthia Kaufman, Carlos Davidson, and Margaret Inssan, the Pacifica Social Justice Committee, especially Denny, Hyah, Julie, Blue, Deej, and Tori, the Pacifica Progressives, especially Suzanne Moore and Robert, Pacifica Faith in Action, especially Carolyn Harmio, Ellen Hague, and Gloria Stofan, Pacifica Peace People, especially Delia McGrath, Tree City Pacifica, especially Gail Benson-Shoemaker, Plastic Free Pacifica, especially Alejandra Warren, Peninsula Clean Energy Board members for teaching me the ways of clean energy, especially Kirsten Andrews Schwend, our local clean energy expert. I'd like to thank all of our local business and our local business partners, in particular Recology and Chris Porter and Ron, who I got my lovely lay from this evening. Thank you, I feel so special. I want to thank former member, a council member and mayor, Sue Degree, for all your guidance, former council member and mayor, John Keener, former council member and mayor, Peter Loeb. I want to thank city staff. You have been amazing, especially Sarah Coffey, Elizabeth Brooks, Mike Perez, Tina Wermeyer, Louis Sun, Sam Batista, Chief Stidle, city attorneys Denise Bazano and Michelle Kenyon, and especially you, Kevin Woodhouse. I'd like to thank PBNR Commissioners, especially Cindy Abbott and Cynthia Knowles, all of our local county and state representatives, especially those presenting here this evening. I'd like to thank my fellow council members, especially Sue Votarlos. We will, you will be missed, and we had a lot of fun times. I know people don't believe that, but we did, and I'll miss them for sure. I want to thank the Pacifica Runners Club and my surf buddies, especially Kimba, Sol, and Antoinette, who managed to help keep me sane this year in particular with the running and surfing. I want to thank my family, my sisters and my brother, my extended family, my in-laws and my friends who have become like family. All of you listened to me drone on and on for countless hours about the state of Pacifica politics, and you don't even live here, so thank you. I want to thank my friends. One of my friends, Dan, and he got this amazing City of Pacifica Service Award. It's for five years of service, and it's apparently an antique, but I heard, even though I've only done four years as council member, I heard that the pandemic counts as two years. So, we can go with that for now. I want to thank my friends Pauline, Olga, and Lynn for being by my side through all of this. I want to thank my mom and dad, who've always believed in me and encouraged me, and who taught me how to work hard and stand up for what is right. Thank you, mom and dad, for your love and support. Most of all, I want to thank my kids, Astra, Nova, and my husband, who I think missed me when I was gone or when my brain was elsewhere, but especially my husband, because you all know this is a family affair. I don't know if you know, but along with his day job as vice president in the logistics sector, my husband is also a very active member of our community. He's a captain in the United States Navy. He is a San Mateo County Veterans Commissioner. He's on the Advisory Council of the Cordell Bank National Marine Sanctuary. He's Secretary of our Support Group, Helping After Neonatal Death. He's a Tree City Pacifica member, a Beach Coalition member, and I'm sure I forgot one more, but I want to thank my anchor, my cheerleader, my dear husband, Kai Martin. And I want to just leave you all with one final thought to my fellow council members. I wish you all the best, and I challenge you to challenge yourself. Go outside your comfort zone, think in different ways, listen to all sides, have empathy, compassion, and remember, we are the people. Thank you. We will move on to the presentations to outgoing mayor.
Oh, no, no, no. Don't we get to talk to you?
Well, it says Mayor Protem Beckmeyer will present a city proclamation to outgoing mayor. After that, you get to talk, I think.
Yes, you will have an opportunity to speak, absolutely. Okay, so, I do have a proclamation to present. Let me get my correct part of my glasses on. Okay. All right. Proclamation of the City of Pacifica in recognition of Gerda Martin for outstanding public service as a member of the city council. Whereas Gerda Martin was elected to the city council in 2016, during her four-year term, Gerda served as mayor from December 2019 through December 2020. And whereas, in her capacity as city council member, Gerda has served on numerous boards and committees, including the Peninsula Clean Energy Board of Directors from 2019 to 2020, the City and County Association of Governments Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee from 2017 to 2018, the Pacific Beach Coalition from 2017 to 2020, and the Pacifica Resource Center from 2017 to 2019. Gerda also served as council liaisons to the city's Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee and Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission. And whereas Gerda's work while on the city council resulted in Pacifica becoming the first city in San Mateo County to implement a single-use plastics ban, plastics ban, designating the city as a sanctuary city, adopting a bicycle and pedestrian master plan, approving reach codes to help reduce greenhouse gas emissions, recognition of Pacifica as a tree city under the Arbor Day Foundation, working toward greater equity and inclusion of use of beaches in the city for nonprofit surf operations, and furthering the review, updating, and community engagement regarding police use of force policies and non-bias practices. And whereas, in her term as mayor in 2020, Gerda provided strong leadership to the community during the COVID-19 global pandemic, which dominated calendar year 2020. Remaining committed to governing in an accessible and transparent way with modified operations keep the community safe, providing public service announcements and information to the community to promote safe practices during the pandemic, and assisting the community through the economic hardships faced due to the pandemic. And whereas Gerda has exercised her legislative responsibilities as a member of the city council with sincere dedication to the welfare of the citizens of Pacifica, to the environmental health and sustainability of this city, and to furthering the adopted goals of the city council by promoting initiatives that emphasized an engaged community and a healthy and compassionate community. Now, therefore, I, Sue Beckmeyer, Mayor Protem of the City of Pacifica, on behalf of the entire city council and our citizens, express our sincere appreciation and thanks to Gerda Martin for her distinguished service to the Pacifica community, done this fourteenth day of December 2020. done this fourteenth day of December, 2020.
Thank you. Okay.
And that's not all. We have. Now, Mary, it's your turn to speak. Oh, no, we're going to do the gifts first. Do you mind? Can we do that for? Okay, all right. So there are a few things that I have for outgoing Mayor Martin, which I'll do my very best to bring to the camera for, so they can be seen. The first is gavel mounted, presented to Deirdre Martin, City of Pacifica Mayor 2020. For your bragging wall.
Yeah, because I never even got to bang that darned thing.
Right? It goes through right here in the back, so you can take it and gather it. In addition, sorry. Councilmembers. Have a gift for you, a couple of gifts for you. Including a picture from Sharp Park Beach, which we know is your beach. Oh, sorry about the reflections. I knew this would happen. We know this is your beach for Beach Coalition cleanups. And we just felt, Mary and I looked at this and said, of course, it has to be the picture with the surfers.
Beautiful.
This is the photo by a local photographer, Sharon Walker. And that'll be something special for you to have. And then I know one of the things that we didn't mention specifically in the, in the proclamation, but that you were really, really anxious to make sure happened during your year, and that was for us to get the bee ordinance straight. And so I have some items here from the council. These are for you and your children. I know these are backwards, right? I should mirror my image or whatever. It's amazing bee. Honeybee, some books that you can enjoy with your kids. And then a great book called Beekeeping Corelators, How to Raise Your First Bee Colonies. Lots of.
That's so wonderful.
For the whole family.
Thank you. We are just building our bee platforms like this next week.
I know. And then there's your proclamation for your bragging wall as well.
So thoughtful.
Thank you. Okay, council members. Who's up? Mary?
Yeah, I'll go. Oh, Deirdre. You know, I think by far you are one of the strongest women I have ever met in my entire life. And for so many reasons, right? And I appreciate you more than you know. Look at me. Crying.
Don't make me cry. I put mascara on for this.
I mean, just the way that you're, you're warrior for the environment. I can only hope to do a bit of that. Thank you for always speaking your mind, always never holding back. You're brave, you're smart, you're beautiful, and I'm just so happy that I've got to serve with you. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve with you here and on the Park Beach and Recreation Commission. Thank you, Deirdre. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary. Right back at you. Strong sister.
Mayor, I mean, Councilmember O'Neill.
Oh, I didn't know you were taking over. Okay. Wow, you already got your name on there. We have two mayors, if you look on the screen. I just wanted to say, Deirdre, we've had our differences, but I have to admit I respect and admire the dedication you gave to this job. Okay? Especially with the young family preschool like you have. I don't know how you did it. I don't, I'm trying to recollect and I don't think you missed a single meeting at all. I think the, you did call, even called in once when you were back east because your mom had had some surgery or whatever. So I wanted to say thank you for your dedication, your respect and your energy. You are the ever-ready bunny. You just keep going and going. And I mean that in a complimentary way. And you are passionate about what you want and, and everything. And I really do want to compliment you on those aspects also. So it has been fun serving with you. It's been interesting. It's been entertaining. But I also want to say I really respect how you this past year. I mean, every mayor seems to have the issue that happens during their term, and I think you got the mother of all issues. Okay? And I know you, the emails I got, I'm sure you got ten more than I did, ten times more than I did. Okay? And I really respect how you've handled and, and held the till of the boat of Pacifica as we went through these rough waters. So thank you for that, Deirdre.
The, the fact that you said you're going to miss me the most, it would seem to other people that we don't get along. But I was told recently that we have the same type of personality. That when we're passionate about something, we do it all the way, both of us. And I don't mean to talk about myself. But it will give people an idea of what it's like. And we can talk anytime outside of council, even though we don't always agree on council. We're fine. And I am going to miss you too, because we'll see. Maybe I don't have to fight so hard. No. I, you know, so thank you for everything you've done. And I totally agree with Mike. It would have been so hard to go through this 2020 as the mayor and so many issues, closing the beaches, closing the parks, back and forth, and all of the issues that, that you had to go through at being the mayor. And thank you very much for doing it. We'll see you later sometime.
Yeah. Sue, Mayor Pro Tem.
I have a couple of just to add. I really want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to learn how to listen more closely to opinions that are not along the same lines as mine. I don't think that it's, you know, a big secret that we haven't agreed on a number of issues, but you've always been respectful and given the reasoning behind why you feel the way you do. And that's helped me really listen closely and learn because it's very important to me that we find common ground, that we find compromise. And I think that this council this last year has had an opportunity to do that with your leadership. I also want to commend you for stepping up and, and having to, I mean, you didn't have a choice about it, but the way that you stepped up regarding leading through the pandemic, nothing can really prepare you for that. And I think you did a masterful job with the press, with, you know, the proclamations, with making statements about closing the beach, all of that. And, and I'm sure it was really difficult and you, it didn't look like it was difficult. So kudos to you for that. Thank you.
All right. Any dignitaries that's on the agenda? It's okay.
On some, Mayor Martin, we have Katrina Rill from Councilwomen's, sorry, from Congresswoman's office. I'm just, I'm just looking to find her, to promote her to panelist.
I think she may have dropped off.
Yeah, I'm not seeing her present at the moment. We may come back to the representative from Jackie Spears office. And. Let me look for the others.
We have Virginia Kroger here.
And Chris Hunter has his hand up.
And Elmer's there.
Okay, yeah. We've got Virginia Kroger and Elmer Martinez from Assemblymember Mullen's office.
Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Barton. Council of Pacifica, it is my honor night representing Speaker Pro Tem Kevin Mullen service to the City of Pacifica this past year. Mayor Martin, you. And we are so very grateful to you. Present this certificate of recognition to you for your time and sacrifice of energy and time with your family and all of that that you have done, not only this past year, but the four years you served with us. For Honor, Honorable Mayor Deirdre Martin, Mayor, City of Pacifica, in honor and recognition of your four years of dedicated service to the residents of the City of Pacifica. During your service on the council, you helped navigate through some challenging times and your leadership laid a strong foundation for the future. On behalf of the State of California, congratulations and best wishes for your future endeavors. Presented on this fourteenth day of December, 2020. I would, on a personal note, like to thank you for representing and serving my hometown. And I am privileged to have been working with you the past few years. And I just, I admire your strength and I know that the assemblyman feels the same way. Partnership in this time has been incredibly important and you have been one of the the voices, the faces out there on the front lines, and we are so appreciative of that. I also would like to take this opportunity to interview my colleague, who many of you know, has joined us from Center Hill's office, Elmer Martinez. We are so fortunate that we have someone that also represented Pacifica in the Senator's office and now will represent with me Pacifica in the Assemblyman's office. So on behalf of the, the Office of Assemblyman Kevin Mullen, I'd like to introduce my colleague, Elmer Martinez. Congratulations, Mayor Martin, and best of luck to you.
Thank you, Virginia.
Thank you, Virginia, and hello, honorable council members. It's great to see everybody. I wish I was there in person to echo what Virginia had mentioned and also the Assemblymember sentiments. But I wanted to take this opportunity just to quickly reintroduce myself as the Assemblymember's liaison to the City of Pacifica, but also to just wish Mayor Martin the best of luck in your next chapter and a thank you for your dedication in the community. And I also wanted to just quickly welcome back Councilmember Vaterlos and welcome the newly elected Councilmember Big Stick. So I look forward to working with you all in this new role. And please don't be a stranger if we could be of any service. Thanks again.
Thank you, Elmer. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Did you see where that Katrina Rill is on from Congresswoman Spears' office? I'm just trying to promote her at the moment. Maybe if Katrina Rill can raise your hand as an attendee, we'll, we'll help us find you.
And if you're dialing in from a phone, just hit star nine to raise your hand. Maybe we can go to Chris Hunter?
Yeah.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and, and Councilmembers. It's a real pleasure to be here tonight. I am representing Supervisor Don Horsley and myself. It is a great honor to have this, this resolution honoring Deirdre Martin for her, her term in office and her time as mayor. I'm not going to go through the time of reading it because so many people have said so many of the same things. I just wanted to make it clear to Deirdre that Don sends his, his great regards, has always enjoyed working with you. The things that you said earlier about two years for the pandemic, it's, it, it seems like that's exactly what it's been. So what a year to be the mayor, what a year to finish up your, your time on the Pacifica City Council. Your honors have been, your accomplishments have been great. One of the things I imagine you never thought you would do was encourage people not to come to Pacifica. It's, it was a real irony about how a city council person has to get on TV and say, please don't come to my town because there's too many people. And during the pandemic, and I think you handled that difficult situation beautifully. And you deserve a lot of credit for the things you did. So I want to wish you all the best in your future career and I wanted to congratulate you for what you've done. It's brave to throw your hat in the ring. You entered, as Teddy Roosevelt used to say, you entered this arena. He said it was a man in the arena, but you've been a woman in the arena. And one of the things he said was that if people who don't do this, they shall never be with those cold timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat. And you have been a woman in the arena. And, and I congratulate you and Don Horsley, and the Board of Supervisors congratulate you. So good luck with your next chapter and all the work you've done with all of the things that people have talked about tonight. And I wanted to congratulate Sue Vaterlos also on her reelection and election of Tiger Jazz Big Stick. They all, all of you, the City of, City of Pacifica has the support of Don Horsley and this Board of Supervisors. And as you can see tonight, many of the other politicians in the region have staff who live in Pacifica. So everybody's, everybody's phone call gets answered. So congratulations for, to you and thank you for your service.
And thank you, Chris, and thank you to the county Board of Supervisors for the proclamation as well. Okay.
I'm still working on trying to get the representative from Jackie Spears' office on.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, she's coming up right now. And we've got Katrina Rill on from Congresswoman Spears' office.
Oh, yes. Okay, I have been on all along.
Oh, hi. You know what?
You were one of my colleagues and so my name showed up as Radha Karaja. My apologies. I'm, yeah, but I was on the entire time.
Sorry.
Madam Mayor, and members of the council staff, it's such a pleasure and such an honor to join you tonight. And on behalf of Congresswoman Spears, I am here to thank you for your service, Deirdre. And the Congresswoman entered extended remarks into the congressional record. The congressional record, as you know, is the official history of Congress. So when Astra Nova are going to look you up 50 years from now, they're going to find this document. And I'm not going to read everything that I was planning on reading initially because a lot of people already said so. But let me just read a couple paragraphs. Madam Speaker, I rise today to recognize Deirdre Martin as she departs from the Pacifica City Council, wishing her for four years. The last year as mayor. Serving as mayor of the small town is never an easy task. But it's particularly challenging during a pandemic not seen in a century. Deirdre took her responsibility to keep Pacifica residents safe very seriously and did a remarkable job keeping them informed with regular updates, FAQs, and informational videos. During her time on the council, Deirdre has accomplished much, and much of it has been informed by her environmental and social activism. And it then goes through a list of achievements that you did. I won't repeat them because we're running out of time here. And then it concludes by saying, Madam Speaker and members, as Deirdre Martin is retiring from the Pacifica, Pacifica City Council, I ask my colleagues to join me in thanking her for her service to the residents of Pacifica and San. to the residents of Pacifica and San Mateo County. She will now have fewer Zoom calls and more time to spend time with her husband Kai Martin and their two daughters Nova and Astra. However, I am certain she will remain active and engaged in pursuit of social and environmental justice for all. It has been my honor to serve with you. Those are the words of Jackie Spears.
Thank you very much.
Let me add, Deirdre, it's been just a pleasure to meet you over the last four years and gotten to know you and seen you on the council. I wish it had been in person, like under normal times, but thank you very, very much for your service.
Thank you, Katrina, and thank you, Congresswoman Spears.
Thank you.
Okay, so Sarah, are we inviting public comments?
So Mayor Martin, if you wish, we can invite public comment now. And I'd just like to suggest that perhaps we would do public comment now for both comments related to you and then also for comments related to reelected Councilmember Vatterlas and incoming Councilmember Big Stick at this time.
Can I disagree with that really? Because Councilmember-elect isn't on here yet. So I would want him to be able to hear the comments that are being said to him. That makes sense?
Sure, I believe he's on as an attendee at this time. But we can modify that suggestion and have comments related to Mayor Martin at this time. And then if you wish, have comments later related to the incoming and reelected council members. And then just try to have people have their comments be concise and not duplicative. So not, you know, speaking twice.
Yes, or comments for me can be limited to like one minute or less. There's not a lot of hands raised, so we can. Everybody can thank me in person in the new year after we get vaccinated. Okay, let's do that. Let's do just a public comment for outgoing mayor. And then when we have the newly elected, we'll have another public comment section. Is that okay, Mayor? Okay, so let's just knock it down to a minute and hopefully everybody can just speed through so we can make sure.
Mayor Martin, our first speaker is Chris Redfield, who will be followed by Anna Garcia. Chris, you're up.
There we go, I think I'm unmuted. Chris Redfield, first like to congratulate the victories, the victors in the November 3rd council race. And I want to thank all of the candidates for jumping into the fray. To me, this is a victory for all Pacificans. I want to welcome the newest member on council, Mr. Big Stick. I also look forward to Mayor Beckmeyer leading the charge of Pacifica's future. I have to sincerely thank Mayor Martin for the passion and commitment she brought forth. Given the 2020 challenges, she rose to the occasion. That's what it's all about. Sorry, I'm going off script here. I can appreciate that maybe more than most. Took me too long to open up the door to the conversation and I'm glad I did. Thank you for reciprocating. Pacifica's monumental obstacles and objectives never end. I feel we are in good hands going forward. I want to wish you all a safe and Merry Christmas in New Year's season. Thank you.
It's Chris.
Anna Garcia, you're our next speaker. Please state your name for the record. You'll be followed by Linda Jonas.
Okay. Okay, Anna Garcia, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, Deirdre, Madam Mayor and the council. Deirdre, I just wanted to express so much gratitude and admiration for all your work. You embody the phrase, think globally, act locally. Everything from the single-use plastic ban and stopping the highway widening. We always felt that our gem of a town was in good hands. We knew that you were advocating for things that really mattered in the long run and you handled all the challenges with grace and humor and openness and curiosity. So we wish you good luck. I'm so excited for you to get some time back with your beautiful family and time with some friends hopefully soon. Congratulations and thank you.
Linda Jonas, please state your name for the record. You'll be followed by Paul Toda.
My name is Linda Jonas. And I just want to say, you know, thank you, Deirdre. You and I don't agree on every single issue. And that's what democracy is all about, being able to agree to disagree. But there are many things you and I do agree on and I thank you so much for your service. And I look very much forward to being able to be friends carrying on in the future. Thank you, dear heart.
Paul Toda, you're next, followed by Lynn Adams.
Thank you, Paul Toda here. On behalf of all of us at Tree City Pacifica, I'd like to thank.
Oh, we lost them. Paul's on.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, Paul Toda here. On behalf of all of us at Tree City Pacifica, I'd like to thank Deirdre Martin for her service to the people of Pacifica, both as a member of the City Council and as mayor. Deirdre, a devoted public servant, has been especially supportive of Tree City Pacifica, helping us launch in 2019 and thrive in 2020 despite the pandemic. She and her family planted trees for both of our Arbor Day celebrations and she supported reforms to city policies regarding the heritage tree ordinance. She supported conservation efforts throughout her terms. She understands at her core that the people of Pacifica love living here because we are surrounded by a natural world that provides us with beauty, with clean air, with better health, and with a hope for a green and bright future. Thank you for all you have done and for all you will be doing in the years to come.
Thank you, Paul.
Lynn Adams, you're our next speaker. You'll be followed by Suzanne Moore. Please state your name for the record.
Sure, Lynn Adams, Pacifica. Deirdre, you have been an amazing. Can you hear me?
We can now, you dropped out.
Okay, Deirdre, you've been an amazing advocate for the environment, making Pacifica the first city in San Mateo County to ban single-use plastic. You've been the mayor advising and getting us through this, the most challenging year on record. And you've done this all while raising two young children, maintaining a beautiful family and home, and working full-time in a very stressful, essential business. On behalf of the Pacific Beach Coalition, Deirdre, we would like to thank you for your selfless service. Congratulate you for your vision for a sustainable Pacifica and world. Thank you for speaking up for bees, for helping Pacifica be an official Tree City, for serving on Peninsula Clean Energy, for furthering equity for biking and surfing in Pacifica. We want to thank you for your continuing your service with the Pacifica Beach Coalition and all you have done for the environment, for people, and for justice. Congratulations on your many accomplishments. And thank you, Deirdre, for your voice and your advocacy for a better city and a better planet.
Next, we'll hear from Suzanne Moore, followed by Cynthia Knowles.
Hey, Deirdre, Suzanne Moore and my husband, Robert Holland. Our family would like to thank you for your leadership, your heart, and your humor. Have wonderful holidays with your family. Best of care.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Cynthia Knowles, you'll be followed by Jim Fithian. Cynthia, please state your name for the record. Cynthia? We'll go now to Jim Fithian. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Jim Fithian, Pacifica. Hopefully you can hear me. Deirdre, Mayor Martin, toughest year ever. And put a period between all three of those words. I want to thank you for your energy and for putting your words into action. Everybody in the Pacific Beach Coalition knows Deirdre works hard and she actually loves the dump site. She knows about that. She really likes work hard. Your courage to stick to what you believed was right during this pandemic, really tough to do. Your courageous and honest letters to the public during the COVID crisis in the newspaper, a couple of things on a personal level. Kai, you're a lucky guy. And Peter, dad, great job. And Deirdre, you did all this while bringing up two beautiful daughters who will step into a better world because of their mayor, their mom. Thank you.
We'll try Cynthia Knowles again, followed by Sue Degree.
Hi, can you hear me now? I think so. Good evening, council and Mayor Martin. Just want to thank you for your tireless devotion to protecting our beautiful Pacifica with your exemplary leadership. The city progressed in its dedication to increasing bicycle and pedestrian access and safety through your strongly advocating for the implementation of the bike and pedestrian master plan. And I was inspired to join the PBR Commission because of you. So I do want to echo what Anna Garcia said, that we always knew we were in good hands with you. So you're a shining star. I'm indebted to you and I just want to thank you for your tireless dedication and your voice.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Sue Degree, you're our next speaker.
Mayor Martin, the last four years have been jam-packed and this one with COVID has been extremely stressful, that it equals more than two. It has to equal at least four years. And you've done masterfully. As a military person, I also was in awe and worried all the time because of that status. There's a lot weighing on you that others may not realize. Then, as many have said, you're a mom and your own job is very impactful. So you've done wonderful for us and really, really appreciate that you did it. And for all those that run for office, like you did at one time, stepping forward into the bit of an unknown and hardship is wonderful. I really appreciate everything you did and those of you who run, thank you very much. So, and I know we're going to see you at the Beach Coalition and many other places. Thanks again.
So. Okay, no more hands raised. Phew, got off easy. So this is now where I bid adieu and to you and you and you and you. And it's been real, it's been fun, it's been real fun. And there is one more hand raised. Should we let Jeff talk? Oh, he doesn't want to talk about me. He's here for the next. So let me step down. Thank you all very much. Go for it, do good things and stay cool. I will, bye.
Okay, next, I am going to bring up Tiger Jazz Big Stick and Deborah Goldfarb to administer his oath of office.
Good evening.
Okay, we're just getting Deborah Goldfarb up into a panelist position and she will be administering the oath of office to incoming Councilmember Tiger Jazz Big Stick. Deborah Goldfarb, you are a panelist and you should be able to unmute yourself and enable your video. Okay, and while Ms. Goldfarb is administering the oath of office, we will, the others of us will mute ourselves and turn off our video so that we can focus on this oath.
Okay. I, Tiger Jazz Twirls Big Stick.
I, Tiger Jazz Twirls Big Stick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Councilmember Big Stick.
Thank you.
Yay.
Love you, mom.
Love you, baby.
I will present Councilmember Big Stick with his certificate of election from the County Elections Office, which is displayed right now. Congratulations and welcome to Councilmember Tiger Jazz Twirls Big Stick.
Thank you.
So Councilmember Big Stick will be taking his seat as a panelist now as a seated council member. And next, we will have the oath of office to Councilmember Sue Vatterlas. Councilmember Vatterlas, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me for your oath of office. I.
I. Sue Vatterlas.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Councilmember Vatterlas.
Thank you.
And I will now present Councilmember Vatterlas with her certificate of election from the County Elections Office.
Thank you.
Congratulations. With that, we will move on to any comments from newly elected Councilmember Big Stick.
Thank you very much. My fellow council members, dedicated staff, and good people of Pacifica, I am Tiger Jazz Twirls Big Stick. I am a kind of person whom either drones on and on and rambles indefinitely or says maybe far fewer words than he otherwise might. And so trying to strike that balance. Mostly what I want to say is what an honor it is that I have been elected to this position, that I am looking forward to doing everything I can as a person to live up to the trust placed in me by the community. And after that, just briefly touching on the premise that the reason I decided to run for this office was because I wished to see if there is anything I can do to help conversation to a place that unites us and helps us find a community that we can all not just live in, but all of us be proud of. And at the beginning of doing this, those are small words, and I hope that they will resonate in meaning by the time I am through. So again, thank you for this opportunity, and I will do all I can to honor it. Thank you.
Councilmember Vatterlos, would you like to make any remarks?
Yes, I would like to thank the 1,685 people who voted for me. It was a long outcome. It took forever, and I'd like to thank my opponent for running. And also, I would like to suggest that the people who did run and didn't get elected, get involved in the community more, become on certain committees, and so that you know what this is all about. And and then do it again. I'd like to thank all the council members, my family, my husband, who hears about it the most, my son and his wife, and every person who helped me to get here, all the other council members of the other cities. And just thank you to this community. I was not ready to stop, and I just want to keep going. So I'm happy to have these additional four more years to serve the city of Pacifica, and thank you all very much. I'm done.
And now, Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer, would you like to invite public comment for the incoming council members?
Sure. If you have a comment that you'd like to make for the incoming council members, if you could please raise your hand in the participants section by clicking the raise hand feature, or if you're on the phone, by dialing star nine. And well.
How much, how much time would you like, Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer, for public comments at this time?
Oh, I think a couple minutes is fine. I see four hands. Two? Yeah?
One.
Oh, one. Someone's voting for one. Let's keep it to two or less.
Okay. Give me one moment while I bring up the participants. I have a public comment first from Jeff Gia.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Jeff Gia. I'm a 27-year homeowner resident in Pacifica and Fairway Park. I want to start by congratulating Sue Vatterlos and Tiger Jazz Big Stick for their city council wins last month. Congratulations to both of you. My family and I have known Sue Beckmeyer for almost 20 years when our kids were in elementary school. I'm very proud and happy to have her as our new mayor. Pacifica is facing unprecedented challenges, and I'm confident that she will act on these issues with the utmost integrity. Sue has done exactly what she said she would do when she ran for city council. She works hard for all the citizens of Pacifica, works to improve our economic base, and protects vulnerable neighborhoods with appropriate shoreline protections. She has a constant eye toward the future needs of the city. Sue is consistent, fair, and researches all sides of the issues. She will bring her integrity and a strong voice to the office when we need it most. I strongly support her move from, her moving from Mayor Pro Tem to Mayor of Pacifica. And thank you for your ongoing leadership, Sue.
Next, we'll have Linda Jonas, followed by Gail Benjamin.
Wow, how can I follow those comments? Sue Beckmeyer has been a very, very close friend. I was her treasure for her campaign. I believe in her wholeheartedly. She is a fantastic person and will do wonders for our community. As well as those who have served previously, I believe in this council. And you know, even though not every single decision you guys make is one that I agree with as a personal thing, I fully agree that you do the best for our total community. And sometimes that's hard for me to accept on a personal level, but I know that I can believe in you and trust in you to do the best for the whole of Pacifica. And Tiger, you've been my buddy for quite a while, and I believe that you will also come up and do good for our community. You know that. You know that I believe in you. I've had a pretty tough time here lately on a personal level with family things. Please forgive me, but I believe in you, and you'll do good. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Gail Benjamin. Go ahead, Gail.
Okay, can you hear me? Yes.
Yes.
First of all, good evening. Congratulations to Sue and Tiger. And I hope if Deirdre, you're watching, good luck to you too in your civilian life. I would like to talk to you tonight about promoting Sue Beckmeyer from Mayor Pro Tem to mayor. Sue is passionate about Pacifica. She's always willing to listen, and she's very accessible. She hears all sides of any situation before making a decision. She represents not only District Five, but all of Pacifica, and she will be the best person to lead Pacifica's beleaguered businesses and citizens to recovery and to help us thrive after this pandemic is over. So please elect her as mayor. Merry Christmas to you all and stay safe. Thank you.
Next, we will have Sue Degree. Sue Degree, you can go ahead.
Uh huh. Yes, thank you. I want to thank all of you for serving. It hasn't been easy at all for any of you. And Tiger, you were on the planning commission, and that also is a lot of work. I'm looking forward to things being hopefully better for everybody as we go forward. And Sue, you're going to be the first mayor under the district things, and so that's going to be something special too. Fortunately, not as horrible, not horrible like COVID, but you're going to be in part of that as well. But that all the, all of you listen and understand as you already do. But it's going to be interesting to see how this works out and to make sure that all of Pacifica feels like all of Pacifica and that all the districts are working together. So I'm going to be rooting for you all, and thank you for serving. And again, Tiger, thank you for running, and also for all those that did run. It's not easy to make that step, and it's not easy to serve, and we're trying to hear everybody and do what's right for the city. So thanks for your services already, and good luck in the future.
Looking for any more hands raised from the public at this time. If you would like to speak for public comment, raise your hand now. For star nine, if you are calling in. And it looks like that is all for public comments. I'll bring it back to council. And with that, I invite the council members to the portion of the meeting for the selection of the new mayor. I see a hand from Councilmember O'Neil.
I'd like to nominate Sue Beckmeyer to be mayor this year.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember O'Neil and a second by Councilmember Vatterlos for Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer to become the new mayor. With the, I'll call the roll call vote, Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Councilmember Beer.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatterlos.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer.
She's on mute.
Mayor, you're on mute.
Yes.
First, first vote as mayor, and you're muted.
Does that tell you anything, Mike? Is this for the future?
And the selection of Sue Beckmeyer as mayor passes with a vote of five to zero.
And I would nominate Mary Beer to be Mayor Pro Tem.
I'll second.
Motion by Vatterlos for Mary Beer for Mayor Pro Tem with a second by Mayor Beckmeyer. I'll go through the roll call vote. Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Councilmember Beer.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatterlos.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And the the motion to elect Councilmember Beer as Mayor Pro Tem passes with a vote of five to zero.
All right.
Next, I welcome the incoming mayor's remarks.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the comments of support. And I'm going to keep my remarks very brief. When I ran for city council two years ago, I made a commitment to work hard for the city and for the citizens. And I'm honored to take that commitment to the next level as mayor. I vow to listen, and I will do my very best to find solutions that take all points of view into account. And I'll continue to strive for compromise and collaboration. But most of all, I will commit to doing the hard work, because sometimes it isn't easy to decide and to vote. And I will do that. I will give you my very best, and I look forward to serving with all of you. I really have to say one thing, which is thank you to my husband, John, who has been complete support from the very beginning of deciding to run all the way through today and on into the future, I certainly hope. And my children have been wonderful too, my dear friends, and I look forward to us all working together. So thanks. And let's see, what's up next, Sarah? We're ready for a journey?
Yes.
Well, I would like to offer congratulations to Tiger on coming on board, Sue Vatterlos and her reelection, and Sue and Mary Beer for their promotion. So I thought we ought to get that in there.
Yes.
I would say too that I'm super excited to serve with all of you. It's going to be great. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Councilwoman Vatterlos and Councilmember Big Stick. Welcome aboard. Thank you.
And then we're journeying in memory of Rob Piccolotti.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you. Merry Christmas and happy holidays, everybody.
Merry Christmas.